Okay, I think we'll get started. I'm going to call the instruction work session to order. We'll be starting with the high school ESOL pilot program. And I will ask Dr. Presidio to introduce the staff and kick off the presentation. Again, reminding my colleagues, we will have the presentation. Hold your questions and comments until the presentation is completed. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much and good afternoon, everyone. We're here to provide an update on some enhancements to our ESOL programming that we've been working on this year. And as you know, we had a dramatic number of Level 1 and Level 2 students, particularly adolescents at the high school level, that entered Fairfax County this year. And we've been really trying to figure out, you know, how we can better meet their needs. So back in October, the Board has done some, I think, very proactive work on this. And back in October, one of the things that the Board had asked us to do is to start to look at what kind of program enhancements we might be able to put in place in FCPs that would better support our students. So we've been working very, very quickly, very diligently. And we'll go through the entire presentation here and kind of give you a more in-depth look at some of these issues. But I just want to mention that, first of all, Fabio Zuluaga is here. And he's been doing an exceptional job helping us at the region level coordinate our work at the department level to put some programming options in place. And Rich Polio, our new ESOL Director, has been doing a fantastic job to try to think about what kind of program enhancements we can offer for next year. And then our Principals and their staffs have just been fantastic. So Deirdre is in the back, and Penny is in the back as well. And Karen Kleiber, one of our ESOL Program Coordinators, is in the back. So they're all here to help answer questions if you have any concerns about site-based perspective as well. So what I think we'd like to do is try to go through the PowerPoint presentation as quickly as we can and preserve as much time as we can for discussion. So I'm going to let Rich, who's been doing most of the heavy lifting on the programming aspects, kind of walk us through the PowerPoint presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Good afternoon. So as Dr. Presidio mentioned, in October, the School Board set forth some areas that they liked staff to address. And those included studying national ESOL programming to provide some analysis of current FCPS ESOL programming, identify what our program needs are, and then offer some ideas, offer our ideas for ESOL program enhancements. So we convened a project team that, it was a committee of stakeholders that included Cabinet members, MSAOC community members, region leadership, Finance and Facilities Department members, instructional services, particularly in the ESOL office, but also in pre-K to 12 and in counseling, and also school-based administrators and teachers. Excuse me? Could we move it forward, Joan? So we, I got a point about you. The program models that we investigated started with a visit in October by a representative group of Fairfax County employees to newcomer programs in the Houston metro area. And we also had our ESOL office plus representatives from Regions 2 and 3 visit TC Williams in Alexandria, Virginia, which has an international school. And our ESOL office visited the U.S. Department of Education. In January, there was a fantastic panel discussion led by the U.S. Department of Education, Office for Civil Rights, Department of Justice, on how school divisions and states are working with English learners and best practices. And then we had some guidance from the federal government that came in January in the form of Dear Colleague Letter. And that was attached to, I believe, our Board Doc. So you can have a chance to review that in its entirety. And I'm going to give some of the highlights now to what came out in the guidance from the federal government. So in the Dear Colleague Letter, our committee looked at some specific areas. First of all, in the areas of avoiding, the Dear Colleague Letter recommends avoiding unnecessary segregation, making sure English learners have access to core curriculum, and serving all of our English learners, levels 1 through 5. And in high school, I want to mention that our high school ELP Level 1 and 2 students are generally in self-contained core academic classes. And this is allowable, according to the Dear Colleague Letter and according to the guidance from the federal government. What we want to continue to ensure is that our English learners take electives and have non-academic time, such as even recess and lunch, with their English-speaking peers. And we also want to continue to make sure that we provide our ESOL services to all levels, all of our ELP levels, 1 through 5. On the topics of, excuse me, just want to go back one. On the topics of the pathway to graduation, this was quite clear in the Dear Colleague Letter, that if an English learner student enters 9th grade with beginner-level English proficiency, school districts should offer English language services that would enable that student to earn a regular high school diploma in four years. And that those students also, we have to make sure that those students have access to grade-level curricula so that they can meet promotion and graduation requirements. Also, on the topic of allowable practices for newcomers, in looking across the country and looking that newcomer programs have started to become more established, the federal government wanted to give guidance to ensure that when we schedule newcomer English learners, that we make sure that their non-academic subjects, lunchtime and recess are scheduled with non-English learner students. And that we provide our newcomer English learners with access to core co-curricular and extracurricular activities, so that they have that full high school experience or middle school experience, not just isolated in particular classes. So with this slide, I want to start to introduce what our current model is in Fairfax County. So currently, in Fairfax County, our beginning ESOL students take ESOL courses that have ESOL course codes such as ESOL 1, ESOL 2, ESOL 3, Concept Science, World Concepts. And those courses are meant to prepare them for the transition to courses that can meet graduation requirements. Those ESOL courses currently provide them with either elective or world language credit, but do not carry credit, standard credit toward graduation, or put them in a class that would enable them to take an SOL, for example, at the end of that test, at the end of that course, and then receive verified credit if they pass the SOL. So this is our current mod, this is our current programming for high school ESOL students So in this programming, in this table, what I'd like to illustrate is that this programming has had some positive effects on students gaining English language proficiency. Once an English learner has taken the WEATA Access, which is our state mandated assessment for English learners, that English learners take yearly to measure their English language proficiency. And once English learners take that WEATA Access two years in a row, we can measure if they're meeting VDOE progress targets in acquiring English. The federal government target is for at least 68% of our English learners, of our English learner students eligible to make progress. And last year, 81% of our English learners in Fairfax County made sufficient progress as measured by the WEATA Access. At Lee, the percentage was 70, at Lee High School, the percentage was 72%. And at Stewart, the percentage was 68%. I should mention that high schools and middle schools, when we looked at all the, when we look at all the data of each and every school and their percentages of meeting those progress goals, high schools and middle schools are generally around that 70% range. And our elementary schools are generally in around the 85% to 90% progress rate. This next slide starts to show where we believe we have some improvements to make. And this slide shows the four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rates for the cohort from 2013-14. And there's still certainly a gap in outcomes. So you can see the four-year rate, it's labeled as LEP because that's the federal subgroup, but we're talking about our English learners, that 66, where their graduation rate was 66%, and all is 86. It does, it does increase, but there's still a 15-point gap in the six-year graduation rate between our English learners and all students in FCPs. And this next slide focuses on the flip side of that, which is, which are our dropouts. And the numbers here show specifically English learner students who are dropouts. And in the cohort for 2014, there were a total of 373 English learners who dropped out of our schools here in FCPs. And I want to mention, first of all, to graduate, as you can see in the bottom right, to graduate with a standard diploma, a student needs 22 credits, about 14 core academic credits, plus Health and PE credits, World Languages credits, and elective credits. The dropouts in this table are taking and passing FCPs classes. However, they're not receiving credits toward graduation. As you can see, the 92, if you ask the question, why would 92, excuse me, 91 English learners have more than 28 credits and still drop out of high school? Now, while we know there are many factors that might contribute to a student dropping out, we can certainly look at the data and say that, well, one of the factors is that look at all the credits they're accruing, they're elective credits, they're World Language credits, primarily elective credits that are not going toward graduation. So all those students that, I would say, 186 students, particularly those who have earned 15 credits or more, the majority of those credits are elective credits. They're here for, for years and not necessarily making progress toward graduation. So after looking at the data, our committee noticed some trends, and I will talk some more about, we have some more data slides coming up. But we've noticed trends, and these trends have resulted in students and schools experiencing a greater need of support, particularly, as Dr. Presidio mentioned, at the high school level. Not to discount the needs of middle and elementary schools, who certainly have seen some increases, but at the high school level, we've particularly noticed an increase in newcomer students. Newcomers, we are, we are defining as those students who've arrived in the last year since September 2nd, 2014, that on that first day of school. Other jurisdictions might have different, varying, we couldn't really find a consistent definition of newcomer, but that's how we're defining it here. Also, we've seen an increase in our English learners ages 18 to 22. And a third group that we've seen is an increase in our English learners who have been impacted by personal or family factors, including reunification, trauma, and students with interrupted formal education, which is another group, and I'll show you some data on that, on that group in a minute, but we're defining those students who are considered, we call them CIF students, students with interrupted formal education, as students who have had two or more years of time when they have not been in school, that interrupted time. Next, and this slide can be a little bit deceiving, so I'd like for you to look at it from right to left, if you wouldn't mind. On the right, those bars show the, between January and November of 2014, there was actually an overall decrease in English learners, levels 1 through 4, by about 400 students. So that's an overall decrease. However, the decrease is really attributed entirely to students at the higher levels. And what we've seen, if you look at the two, the Level 1 and Level 2 areas, is that there's been an increase, a strong increase, last year in Level 1 and Level 2. So those are beginning levels of basically 1,836 students between January and November of 2014. That was that, that surge, as Dr. Presidio alluded to in his opening remarks, that was the increase that we saw. So now we want to look a little bit at who those students are, that 1,836, and starting with newcomers. So our total, when we look at that definition of newcomers as being students who entered U.S. schools and entered FCPs on or after September 2nd, 2014, we had a total of 686. And at Stewart, that number is 78. And at Lee, that number is 54. This does not include our transitional ESOL high school, that we didn't include the data for that. These are students that are at our base schools. And these are, excuse me, thank you very much, these are ninth graders, these are grade 9 students only. So that's where it does not match the numbers, you know, it's not going to exactly match previous numbers, but these are grade 9 students only. And the next slide shows the number of students that we had as of January 29th of this year that are English learners age 18 to 22 in our base schools. Again, not including the transitional ESOL high school program. The total in FCPs is 418 students. At Stewart, 49 students, levels, only levels 1 and 2, between the, between the ages of 18 and 22, and at Lee High School, 25.
There was a question, sorry, Rich. There was a question about why we're including Stewart and Lee High School data only, data points only. These are the two schools that have been identified for this pilot for next year. I know there is some contemplation about Herndon, potentially some support for them. But we've, these are the two schools that we engaged very early on in this process. And so that's why there's specifically data included in the presentation for Stewart and Lee.
That's, that's correct.
I apologize for the interruption.
No, that's fine. Thank you for clarifying. We want to mention this group as a whole, the English learners age 18 to 22, because this is a group that, through the combination of their age and oftentimes low levels of literacy and English language proficiency, that has been particularly challenging for our schools. And next, we come back to our students with interrupted formal education. And in this group, you can see that the FCPs total, now, most students who have interrupted formal education are at those lower levels of English language proficiency. They may have higher levels, you can see there, there are some, the FCPs total of 160 within there, about 19 students at levels 2, 3, and 4. But primarily, these are students that are at our lower-level proficiencies because they're coming with, with gaps in their education. I want to mention that we've started work with many students in this group, particularly at Herndon High School, Stewart, and at Lee, also at Glasgow Middle School and Limbrook Elementary, to identify students, problem-solve with schools, and design and implement interventions that will supplement their Tier 1 instruction, and really review factors that may be impacting their student learning. So we're already on the road to kind of working with, we know these are some of our neediest students, and we've started some programming and projects, and I can answer any questions about that when we're finished, but some of the things that we're doing at schools to help our CIF students. The next slide is just to explain that we, I showed three separate slides about groups of students, but we just want to illustrate that these are not, excuse me, these are not distinct students. So there is lots of overlap between these students. We have, when we talk about the group of newcomers, that's one group, that's that larger group, students who've arrived in the last year to U.S. schools in FCPs. But we also have, many of them are at that lowest level of English language proficiency, ELP Level 1. And of those students, some of them are CIF students who have interrupted formal education, and some of them are over 18. Some of them are all 3. So they're not, this just kind of helps to illustrate, I don't want you to think that, oh, there's, there's these three groups of students that are separate. They're really, some of, many of these are the same students we're talking about. Okay, now, in the committee's work, this is where I'll begin talking about our planning for next year. And as we started planning, we originally started planning, really thinking about those newcomer students. What could we do to improve our programming? And what could we do to enhance the, excuse me, the programming, academic and socio-emotional supports that we give to newcomers? But we quickly realized that it was interdependent with a few other issues. One of those, which we noted in, from the Dear Colleague Letter, is that we have to have a pathway to graduation for our students. Students that enter 9th grade at beginning, at those beginning levels, need a four-year path to graduation. We need to establish that. Will they all graduate in four years? We certainly hope so, but we, we might have the luxury of five or six-year graduation if it's extended, if it has to be, so be it. But we want to make sure that we have to have that, we have to have that pathway established, according to the Dear Colleague Letter. And we haven't necessarily had that, so that's what we've been working on.
And so that's why some of these students had an overabundance of elective credits and not credits toward graduation.
Precisely, precisely. And so when we look at that pathway to graduation, we can't just make enhancements for newcomers, we have to look at our overall high school program, as Dr. Garza just alluded to, like, what are we doing with our high, with overall with our high schoolers? Is the programming sufficient that students are going to be able to graduate within four years? And the answer to that was, well, it's not. We need to, we need to make some changes. So this is why these three, these three areas are really, are very much interdependent, and we would say, at this point, driven by that pathway to graduation. So our working group established a goal, which we highlighted in yellow. Is that right? I don't know. My attempt at a joke. But our goal of the pilot programming that we want to establish is to provide adolescent English learners the academic content and deeper learning skills necessary to succeed in the classroom and graduate from high school on time. And I hope you notice that I, we talked about academic content and deeper learning skills because our objectives, particularly Objective 1, is very important, that we want to develop English language proficiency and content understandings in tandem. This is not a pilot program that is meant to solely give students English language proficiency, but meant to give them strong background knowledge and strong knowledge in the content. So using language through content, they'll, they'll learn language, and they'll learn it through our own program of studies and standards of learning. Our second objective is to ensure the opportunity to graduate with a standard diploma in four years, as I've mentioned. And thirdly, we recognize that we need to provide the socio-emotional and academic support necessary for students to transition into the school community. And this is a pivotal, this is a very important piece for our students to have success. And as you'll see, we're going to address that in our plan. For guiding principles, we established five guiding principles for our, our programming. First, that language and content integration, that all lessons in our courses will include content and language objectives. Second, we want to have culturally responsive schools, where teachers make connections to students' background knowledge and prior experiences to make new learning meaningful and comprehensible. Third, we'll provide a caring culture in this program, where we'll provide wraparound services from school staff and the community, including mentoring, family engagement, parent education, reunification support if necessary, and collaborative student support teams. Fourth, we have to ensure that access to rigor, as I think I've mentioned many times now, make sure that our course sequence and our curricula provide a pathway to four-year graduation. And fifth, we want to make sure that our, we will have collective responsibility and collaboration in this program. So teachers will work together in teams to take collective responsibility for student learning. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. So the courses that we are planning for next year at Lee and Stewart with this 9th grade cohort are: English, a double block of sheltered English 9, so that's a block of using those language objectives and content objectives in a class size of anywhere from 15 to 20 students with a, an ESOL teacher. So, and that would be a double block of sheltered English 9 and intensive oral language and literacy, where students would receive one English credit and one world language credit. Secondly, in science, we're, we are adopting the active physics class, where students will receive one science credit. In math, students will take a double block of sheltered algebra and intensive numeracy. So it's essentially algebra and a support class for that algebra, where they'll receive one math credit and one elective credit. And then we have a new course, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, called Strategies for Success, which is an elective, you'll receive elective credit. And then students will have the opportunity to have an elective of their choice. The Strategies for Success class, we feel, is, is key to the success of students in this programming. And the, this course has been established already in FCPs through Department of Special Services. We are tweaking it a little bit for English learners. The idea being that it's going to help students acclimate to United States schools, give them note-taking study skills, time management, organizational skills, help them with their self-advocacy. We want to introduce some responsive classroom practices to really strengthen the classroom communities, so that students feel like they're a part of something, a part of a class, a part of the school. And we want to have, we also want to introduce the opportunity for our students to interact with English-speaking peers and higher-level English learners, so that they can really practice their English skills and learn from them in a variety of perhaps social, it could be field trips, it could be just in-school projects. You know, there's a lot of ways that we feel that we can integrate during this Strategies for Success class. As part of, in getting ready for this program, we've made some revisions to Regulation 2442. And this is the regulation that looks at credit for secondary language minority students, and that is that we are adding English credit toward graduation for ESOL courses. It is allowable through VDOE. We've had many conversations with the Virginia Department of Education that we can use ESOL teachers essentially as that highly qualified teacher in English. We'll use English 9 standards, and we'll be developing the curriculum for this, we're currently starting to develop it, and we'll develop it this summer. We also, the regulation revision also includes waiving the local world history requirement for English learners. This is already waived for some of our students with disabilities. And we would like to waive the local world history requirement for English learners in order to lessen the academic load in that first year, where they would not take a social studies class, and they would take that Strategies for Success class. They would still, all English learners would still, our English learners would still take three credits of history, social science throughout their high school career, and would still be expected to pass the requisite SOLs in order to graduate.
And that is the state standard, the three credits.
And that is the state standard, the three.
Our fourth is an additional requirement.
This is a local world history, and we've, we've completed revisions to the regulation, which are currently being approved, and will end up coming to the School Board for your final approval. So next, we know that we want to, the most important piece probably to our programming with beginning English learners is making sure that we have, can support students, their families, and the teachers who teach them. And so we are adding bilingual, we're having a bilingual school counselor to work closely with students and families to ensure student needs are being addressed. We'll have dedicated parent liaison support for families of newcomer students. And we'll provide press, professional development for all teachers included in the programming with, starting with an intensive summer institute, and then with ongoing job-embedded professional development. development based on the four core principles. And that, in conjunction with our schools, Lee and Stewart, we have a timeframe already worked out for the, for one week in August, and we're currently planning that professional So next, I want to talk specifically about our students that are ages 18 to 22, our English learners, and these are students that are ELP levels 1 and 2. And we know that, so, our schools have expressed some concern about how to help our students ages 18 to 22, those lower WEDA levels, and we've, based on the meeting of stakeholders, to discuss the issue, we came to consensus on the following practices must be tight, and that's that we have to look at transcripts, previous educational history, and all review in order to make a recommendation for what the best setting is for those students. And we want to make sure that we can counsel students as to whether the graduation requirements can be achieved by age 22, and then we'll advise students as to what program is best for them. For our placement options, in the next slide, we've created a new flow chart where students who have less than six credits, that are WEDA levels 1 and 2, ages 18 to 22, will, their programming will be the Transitional ESOL High School. Students that are levels 3 through 5 will go to Fairfax Adult High School, enroll in GED, or National External Diploma Program. If a student has six or more credits, and they're a WEDA level 1 and 2, that's where the counseling comes in to see, well, what's the best placement for them? If they have many credits, they're almost at graduation, perhaps it is the base school. If not, perhaps it's Transitional ESOL High School or an alternative high school setting. And then our recommended programming, in the next slide, our recommended programming at Lee and Stewart is to enroll our WEDA level 1 and 2 students in Transitional ESOL High School at Lee and Stewart. We're looking at, currently, we have evening programming at Annandale High School, Bryant, South Lakes, Lee, and Falls Church, and we have day programming at Piment. We would, we're looking at adding afternoon programming to Lee and Stewart High School and Transition, the Transitional ESOL High School programming to Lee and Stewart High Schools, so that we can accommodate schedules best.
And access was a challenge.
Yes.
For some of the, some of these particular students we're talking about, so I do appreciate that consideration.
Right. So we're, you know, and we continue to look at daytime sites, that, that's more challenging. So lastly, just in, while we're, while we're looking at programming for Lee and Stewart, we have, we know we need to scale up this programming. So to measure our program's success, we're currently working with the Office of Program Evaluation on methods of evaluating the pilot programming. We're forming a working team with high school principals, I met with all high school principals to share this, and we're, we're going to have a working, a working group of high school principals to look at the coursework, how we change scheduling for FY 16, 17, and we'll certainly be evaluating, looking at the WEDA access scores and the credit accumulation of our students.
Thank you very much. That's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. I wanted to say first, thank you very much for providing the needed context for the board members, kind of why we're here at this point, as well as, you know, where we go from here. So that, that is very helpful, and that's very responsive to our planning discussion that we had, so thank you, thank you very much. So I'm going to start with Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Evans.
Okay, I know that, I saw the hands all waving. Can we go back to the, when they arrived, graduation slide?
Mm-hmm.
That has the, like, the five sets of columns? Nope. Further?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So my question is, because we get, we talk about this often, about the fact how we don't have a, any relief from the Virginia Assembly in terms of what's on, what does on-time graduation mean? And one of the questions I have with that, with the four-year, five-year, six-year, it doesn't really reflect when the people in blue arrived in country. Like, are these?
Right.
And, and that's, to me, that is such a key component to this discussion, because a four-year, I mean, what is the expectation that somebody who arrives here as a seventh-grader or a ninth-grader, because you had those newcomer, that newcomer figure?
Right.
That they're going to reasonably graduate in four years? Like, is that even an expectation? And should that be a part of the board's consideration in a legislative package, which we just talked about in PEC this morning, about what some of the priorities should be? So is there a way to reflect, and I wouldn't even know what, what, you know, like, 50% have been in, you know, in FCPS for X amount of time, or something to that effect? And, and that, that becomes a more, I think, usable and understandable set of data. So that's question number one.
I, I think that, that's an excellent question, and I would say, we, we tried to extrapolate that data, and it's difficult in disaggregating exactly, okay, when students arrive, their entry date to FCPS, and see what their graduation projection was. We were able to get that dropout data, so we kind of knew a little bit about how long people had been here. I think it's something that, if I were to, you know, try and conjecture, that if you were to take a new, a Level 1 student who arrives in ninth grade in FCPS, and all the Level 1 students that arrive in FCPS, what we're saying is that right now, we don't have, it's probably taking longer. And so we don't have that number, and it, most likely, it is below that 66% for that group.
Right.
So I can't say exactly what the percentage is, but your, your point is well taken.
I'm just saying, on a going-forward basis, capturing that data, because that allows us to articulate, you know, all kinds of things, like the total cost of educating a student, because we're going to be educating that student, you know, instead of, you know, 12 years or, you know, four years for high school, we're going to be, it's, it's 50% longer. And if we know that that's part of the equation, then it becomes a funding, I mean, it's all kinds of things. So that's number one. Number two is on the dropouts, can we go to the dropout page? The 373, I'm sorry, there aren't screen numbers, so I don't know which one.
I think it's nine.
Okay, so 373 out of what? I don't, I don't understand what, I don't have any context.
I could get you that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, context of data is like huge, because is it 373 out of whatever, 5,000? Or is it 373 out of 1,000? I don't know what that means. So...
Within, within that cohort, I think we could get that data.
And then on the, I think it's the very next slide that has the four, the EL 1, 2, no, EL 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then the combined?
Yes.
The one that has the big column at the end? So the, I'm wondering, is the drop-off in EL 4, does, does that mean they're quote-unquote graduating out of the program? Or does that mean we just don't have as many? I mean, what does, what does fewer in the 3 and 4 mean?
I think that means that students are, their levels are increasing, so they're moving up, they're either exiting from, they're either, you know, meeting exit criteria for becoming English proficient, so they're becoming a Level 6, and we're not receiving more students coming into our system that, at a Level 3 or a Level 4.
So it's really two things. Either we're not getting more of those students?
Right.
Or we're, we're, the rapid English acquisition, that's, that's, I mean, that's really the key, the key.
Right. The overall trend is for our, the entire group of ESOL students has, has decreased. But where we see that increase is that the Level 1s and 2s are the students that are, that are coming into our system.
And probably, it's not necessarily shown in this, necessary, but some of your comments with regard to an ESOL student that enters an elementary school, you know, the results and our ability to show that they've made the progress that's required, or exceed the progress that's required, over 80-something percent?
Right.
You know, so I think it also depends upon when they enter our system.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and are those the kids that are making up the 66% graduation on-time rate? So the 18 to 22-year-olds, you said that there's an increase of those? Again, I don't have any context, an increase of how many, over time, over what? Like, it, it's the numbers in relation to, and I would say the same thing for the grade 9. Can we go to the grade 9 slide that has 686? I don't know, 686 newcomer grade 9 students, does that mean, does that mean new to the country or new to FCPS? Does that mean new to?
That's, it's, it's new to, it would be new to the country and new to FCPS.
So, but we don't know, in your Venn diagram, does that mean they were in, in school until the previous June, and then they walk into our doors September, so there's no break in their education? Or are they new to the country and new to FCPS, and they haven't been in school for the last, you know, whatever?
Okay.
So we don't, we don't know that. And can you go right to the Venn diagram?
Mm-hmm.
And this is, I think this will be the last one I make, maybe. So on this, that is an awesome slide, but we need the numbers. What, what are the, what's the number of newcomers? Who, who's over 18? Who's CIF? Who's ELP 1? I would even say ELP 2, because there was an uptick in 2. So what, what does that mean in context for us? And then the last thing is, on the, and Dr. Garza, you mentioned it, on the World History, on the Fourth Social Studies, why only lift the requirement for, for the CIF students or the EL students? Why, why don't we just get rid of that?
I think down the road, we're going to have some conversations about that.
Okay.
I think we do need to look, and I think we even need to look at some of the sequencing of courses. Our principals keep telling us our sequencing of the courses are not, in their view, the appropriate sequencing. So I think we have to look at all that, what our current requirements are in our sequencing down there.
Okay, I'm going to move us on. Thank you very much. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 board members to speak, and I'll remind you, we have yet another topic, and we're supposed to be finishing at 4 o'clock. So I'll just ask you to try to be as concise as possible. We even expanded this session for half an hour, because we knew that there would be a lot of wonderful discussion and comments. So I'll go to Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Ms. Darinak Kovacs and I were among the group that went to the Houston area to look at, at the models there, and I think we were all very impressed with, with, with the models there. So I, I'm glad to see that we're taking the, the best of what we found there, the best of what we're already doing to, to move this forward. I did have several questions. I'm very excited about this program. I think it's going to help our students very much. So since we're on this slide, I'll start there. With the over 18, the 18 to 22-year-olds, we're looking at, I know we're looking at subsets. Some of those 18 to 22-year-olds could be ninth graders, correct? Is that right?
That's correct.
Because they're, they're newcomers?
Yes.
And they're coming without?
They've come without, they've come with zero credits?
Without credits.
Or, you know, very, very few credits.
Right. So I just think that's an important point to make.
Yes, it is. That's why you have to look at that flow chart.
Yes.
And really, the driver is number of credits they come with.
Right.
Right?
That's correct.
And so, and I think we have, whether we'll, we should get the comparative numbers, but I believe we have more of those coming in than, I mean, we've always had some, you know, we've always had some, but I believe that we've had significantly more in the, in the last couple of years. I do want to ask you on slide 19, if you'll go to that one. The double-blocking of English, that's great. I appreciate the fact that we are going to be focused on language and on literacy. I'm starting to add, I'm, I'm adding this all up, and could you walk me through how this then sets us up for a student graduating in four years? I'm looking at four core credits, and then, does this, and then, does this assume that every year they will take? Go to 19, please. Is that?
I have a draft.
The one that says Recommended Pilot Course Offerings?
We've started a draft of a four-year plan.
Oh, there we go, yeah.
So actually, students, in one year, we don't expect that students would have the requisite, you know, English skills to be on their own or anything in one year, I think. So we've, we would be double-blocking English 10, we would be double-blocking most likely math again in that second year, they would take biology in the second year, health and PE would start in the second year, and they would take a World History that would most likely be teamed. This is all in draft form at this point, but we have a, a plan where they would follow this four-year sequence in order to, you know, hopefully graduate within four years.
But they would need, how many core credits do?
Well, total 22.
Total 22.
Total 22 credits.
But some of those electives can count towards that.
Some, some electives do count. They will need to pass at least six SOL tests?
Yes.
And take, I believe I had mentioned, 13 or 14 core academic classes that carry standard credit.
So what you're telling me is that this is really our, our first year?
This is year one, correct.
This is year one?
Correct.
So we could get, they, in future years, they would get more core credits?
Correct.
That, the assumption is they'll get the language?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes.
Very good.
And the benefit to having this program at a school site is because as students develop the language, in some cases, they can take, as we see this program progress, in some cases, they can take courses with other students within the regular high school.
Certainly.
Outside the ESOL program.
Okay.
So that's the benefit, and I think you all saw that in some of the models that we, that we saw.
That's exactly what we would like to do, because we get a lot of staffing efficiencies there when we do that. But we know when the students come into us new, we need to create a very small supportive learning environment for the students with a lot of wraparound services. So obviously, that's why we're beginning at, at grade 9, to provide that kind of cohort environment for students. And then we can look at other staffing efficiencies as well. I mean, this is getting a little bit outside the scope of your question, but when we can get teachers that are dual-certified, so a math teacher, a science teacher who is also ESOL-certified, that gives us a lot of opportunities for supports as well. And we've actually started conversations with George Mason University, Dr. Lockhart, and I had a meeting with their dean recently, I think it was just last week, to talk about an expedited licensure program and trying to work with the state to get some licensure flexibility. So we're looking at lots of, lots of future flexibilities to create more staffing efficiencies.
That would be great. And speaking of staffing, you mentioned the parent liaison, one that's dedicated. Would that mean that Lee and Stewart will get one more parent liaison just for this program? Is that the idea?
Well, what we're looking at is having our Family and School Partnerships office work specifically with Lee and Stewart to see what their needs are. And we have core FCPS money that, that goes to parent liaisons, and then we have Title III money which supplements that. And so it's not too much of a stress for our Title III funds to look at the parent liaison hours that they currently have, and see what each school thinks would be sufficient moving forward, and we could, we can handle that.
Okay.
Part, part of what we're trying to do here is be able to pilot something and really understand what are the costs associated with this program. So we're trying as much as we can to keep the costs low. It's not going to be entirely cost-neutral, but that's, that's the goal, is to keep the costs as low as possible, use some of the Title III funding and some other funding flexibility that we've got to try to support the pilot and understand what the needs will be to scale it up.
Okay. The afternoon program, what are the hours of the afternoon program that you anticipate?
That's something that we're discussing with the Transitional ESOL High School staff now. We've looked at a few different models, possibly maybe starting at 2 o'clock and running a program from 2 to 8. We need to work, we're working with transportation on how that might work with buses for students in that, in that base school area, if they chose to take a bus. Also, we would have, we could also have afternoon programming that started a little later, after the school day started. So we might actually have kind of a staggered start with some students at 2, and some students after 3, after all students have, after all base school students have been dismissed.
And that would enable, but it would be enough to enable them to take all of these credits that you're looking at now.
They would take. For Transitional ESOL High School, we're looking at slightly different model in introducing the English 9 credit and courses right off the bat this coming year. We, we probably will not go with Active Physics right away, they'll continue with Concept Science and World Concepts and History, but definitely Algebra and working with double-block of math.
Okay, we're going to have to move on.
Yep.
Well, I, I need to ask another question here, which is...
Just to clarify, however, the afternoon, Mrs. Evans, will also provide a path for the kids to graduate? Whether the kids, the students, not the kids, the students graduate in four, five, or six years, we'll just have to figure it out. But we're going to put them also on track for graduation from day one.
Okay, that's great. Of course, one of the issues that we have throughout Fairfax County is attendance, and so is this something, you've talked about wraparound services, have, do you have a strategy on attendance? I think, you know, some of these students are... I think, you know, some of these students are, will be, you know, working. Some of these students will, you know, as you say, have trauma. Do you have a strategy on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's several. I mean, part of the smaller learning community that we talked about is, you know, teachers really knowing the students well, forming close relationships with the students and the families and making sure that they can track and monitor and, you know, connect with the students and, and help support them in additional ways because they'll have a smaller number of students that they're getting to know. And they'll share that same group of students with their colleagues. So that's like a classroom level support. And then you'll remember, we talked about putting a bilingual counselor into the program as well. So somebody that can actually connect not just with the student, but with the family, the home as well, to make sure that we're being able to monitor and support the students. So, you know, there's a couple of different levels of that. And I think when we think about the, you know, the eighteen to twenty-two year old program, that's one of our, you know, it really desires is to have that daytime or that afternoon programming. So students would have some different options as to when they could access the schooling and still work as well. So, you know, trying to, you know, create that flexibility for students to have some choice in terms of when they access the academics as much as possible.
And I, and I think, you know, we, we know that that relationship piece is such a fundamental piece. So thank you very much.
Okay, and next we have Mr. Velkoff, followed by Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Strauss.
So as I reflect on the four-year path to graduation and the infinite wisdom of our federal and state departments of education, I was thinking about the Einstein quote, which is that everyone is a genius, but if you judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing it is stupid. So when I see the, the, the number of students who are accumulating so many credits and not graduating, you know, you could look at that and you could say, well, our counselors are really failing them because they're letting them take all these classes and not getting them the right classes that they need to graduate. But I don't think our counselors do that. What they might be doing, and I'm speculating, is that they're steering students towards classes in which the students are going to be successful in learning something of value and engagement for them. But then that still has the unintended side effect of long-term failure to graduate. So where I'm going with this, of course, is that we need to redefine what graduation is. And I'm glad to hear that we're taking steps that we could, things that we can do locally, as you've outlined, to make graduation more possible in terms of the requirements. But I'd like to know, and you don't have to answer this today, but I'd like to know what graduation could look like if we could define it. And if we can come up with that, you know, I'd like us to go to the General Assembly and the Departments of Education and define an alternate form of graduation that works for these kids, that allows them to go out into the workforce and be productive, et cetera. And I'll skip my second comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Velkoff, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I appreciate the focus on the path to graduation. I think that's an important piece. And I know this is really focused on, on what you're doing at Stuart and Lee, but the information you have on slides twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, are you able to provide that information for the other high schools as well?
Yes, I mean, we can provide that information along with the more detailed kind of end size that Ms. Schultz talked about.
I, I would be interested in seeing that. And then on slide twenty-three, I think the counseling part to get the kids in the right program is important. But when you said, we're going to do that, who's doing that work? Is that stuff in central registration? Just explain that to me.
That's, we currently, we currently don't have, we have registrars in our central registration who do an excellent job. We feel we need to have someone with more expertise of the high school programming. And so that position, again, as I mentioned, will, we're going to be having in the central, you know, based at Dunloring, that we're going to have in central registration this coming year.
So it requires a lot more training?
It's going to require training.
Training, yes. And I think also these flow charts are also very instructive about the variety of programs and how we need to better counsel students. So I think that's a, a big plus as well.
I, I think that's excellent because that's some of the feedback I've gotten, that we're not necessarily getting kids in the best place they need to be. And the other concern does get when you have twenty-one and twenty-two year olds in high schools, it's not necessarily the best fit for everybody. And so there is a little impatience to know what we do in all the other high schools. You know, I understand maybe we can't start anywhere, but I'm hoping that some of these pieces are going to help at least get kids everywhere in the right program.
Right. Mrs. Smith, I think this entry point is going to be fundamental for the success of these two programs that we are going to kind of organize parallel programs because we are going to be able to educate our students and their families in their native languages. What's, what programs do we have in place for their kids to be successful? So that's going to be fundamental for this, the success of this.
And to Ms. Smith's point, on that slide and the one before, students with, with more credits or less credits, the six or more or less than six, I think that's actually helpful across our system. Those same programs and offerings are available everywhere. So I think there's, that's probably one of the pieces that we could benefit the entire system is doing a better job of helping make sure that we're counseling students into the right program.
So this, those two, those two charts, that is something that could happen across the system now?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, Rich, just if I could, yeah. Yes, I mean, that's our intention is for new students enrolling at the central registration site to use kind of the models that we've discussed here to help make the best placement decisions possible. The challenge is going to be in some instances, we might not have the daytime programming space available for all students or afternoon programming space. So then the student would be forced with really only the selection of the evening programming. Where at Lee and Stuart, we're in, you know, in the process of trying to get that daytime or that afternoon programming. And we'd like to be able to do more of that over time across the county as well. But we're going to start advising students that register this summer on this model.
Very good. Ms. Strauss.
Okay, thank you. This is, this is very hopeful, I must say. You all have worked very hard on this. And the point that was just made on the entry point, that's critical because I know that was one of the things that we heard from our schools, is that particularly where we have the transitional ESOL programs, we've got alternative high schools, we have these for the older students. And being able to get people placed early on in the places where we have curriculum and we have staffing and support, it really fits the older students' needs. So I'm very pleased to hear that. I think that'll help a lot. One piece of information as a follow-up, I just, I would just like to know that where all the transitional ESOL high school programs are for older students, because I just don't, I know where some of them are. But again, when we're in the community, because we get, you know, because, well, where is this? So knowing the location is sometimes critical because you will have community partners and churches that are there to help us and then we aren't sure where to say, well.
Why don't we provide that as a next step? Get that out to the board members.
Right. The, and I think that what we're providing for ninth grade, I, this is, this is flexible. I think it's a lot, makes a lot of sense. I'm also pleased we're going to do this within their base school. We need to keep communities together. This is an effort to help the child, the families, everybody. And so we don't want to see something that is where we're attempting to move these kids out. So I'm very pleased to see that. Very pleased to see the work on licensure so that we can make the best use of, of the teachers that we have, the flexible crediting. And I, I do agree with taking, continuing to take a look at sort of high school diploma requirements for, for people like that. Can we use any of our adult ESOL money for the eighteen to twenty-two year old programming? Because we do get state matching money for ESOL services for adults. Does that get into this pot as well?
I believe we could.
Pardon?
I, I believe we could. I believe we could use.
So we administer the regional adult education grant.
Athlegram.
And I think there's a little bit of flexibility there. What our challenge is currently, and this is the part that Rich's team has been working on, is getting some of those students that are currently in the transitional program right now and in the eighteen to twenty-two year old range, that actually are even a better fit for the adult program. So that's what we're trying to do right now, is start to clean up kind of the pathways in the enrollment in some of these programs so that we can maximize the supports and funding for the students that are most appropriate for that particular program. So it's kind of a cascading waterfall effect, if you will. And in some ways, we've started at the bottom, trying to put in new programming at ninth grade. And we've got to go back up and maximize what we're doing at the transitional and at the adult program.
And then how much, how much work are we doing collaboratively with the county? Because the county in housing, in health department, and all the rest of the pieces that they will be providing and are providing, I'm assuming it's going to be critical that they understand where this is and how to do it so that we are all really on the same page. Just as we do for kindergarten readiness, we need to have same kind of a team approach for this.
And that's where I think the board's support has been really helpful. That needs to continue to be a goal for us. I mean, I, I would credit the board's work on this, you know, being very proactive on this issue from the very beginning at the federal level, the state level, and at the county level. Of course, we're not seeing the kinds of financial support that we would like to see here, but we need to, you know, be persistent and keep at it. And we've had some success in, in terms of providing some of those social supports, but not at the level that we think that the families really would need to receive. So that needs to be an area of focus for us. Additional social work services, additional counseling services, anything that we can do to maximize kind of county wraparound services would be really helpful.
Right. I would, if we have not yet had a good meeting with Pat Harrison on the county side and her staff, that would be appropriate. We need to do that. And, and the nonprofits, Northern Virginia University Service, Cornerstone, UCM, yada, yada, yada. Because they're all in there with us. And then the last piece, just as a, a small detail, Zoe Dillard, our retiring drama teacher at Herndon High School, did a fabulous class for these level-one ESOL kids. And she did not speak Spanish, they didn't speak English, they did a two-way immersion with each other. And the outcome was fabulous. So take a look at that before Zoe leaves. And I assume we are going to share all this with Herndon High School because clearly, although we hang together very well in Herndon, but we need to make sure that they have the resources that they need as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're going to, you know, we have shared the work that we're doing with the High School Principals Association, but we're going to convene, as we said, that working group in the fall to start to talk with the other schools about how we can support them in implementing similar programs, so.
Great, thank you.
And we've actually talked specifically about Herndon to see whether or not there's a way for us to fold them into this work.
Please do, yeah.
So I think that's still possible. The only thing is we want to start small and get it right before we take it to scale. But their numbers are staggering.
It's the same. And the issue, I mean, they do a good job with collaborating within their own community, but I just want to make sure that as we, you know, really work hard and strategically to pull this together, that they're at the table with you and that their partners are all there so that we know what we're doing.
Okay, moving on, Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, Mr. Stork.
Thank you. This is a lot, a lot to bite off, very challenging. And I appreciate that we're making some progress on it. Just a couple of questions. The Dear Colleague Letters, that basically is what passes for federal regulation in this area, right? Is that because there isn't really, it's not like special ad where we don't have regulations, right? So that's, that's our guiding?
Well, we have Title III regulations. So obviously, when we accept Title III funds, there's program standards that we have to follow. What I would say, though, is, is a former Title III coordinator who worked in a previous district that was under federal investigation, this is the most direct federal guidance I've ever seen for Title III programs. And it is a trend around the country for the Department of Justice and the US Department of Education to really look at and give a lot of scrutiny to the different models that are used across the country. So this is very direct guidance, unlike guidance that I've seen in the past, so.
Okay, so it's an improvement then? That's good, okay. On SOL tests for our ESOL students, are they expected to take the regular SOL tests in high school that everyone takes?
They could take regular SOL tests with accommodations. So they qualify for accommodations, perhaps read aloud, bilingual dictionary. There are many, many different accommodations they could have. So yes, but they're expected to, if you want to earn verified credit and get a standard diploma, you have to pass SOL tests, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I, I need just to step back a little bit and get a little more information about the transitional ESOL high school program because we've been talking about it a lot. I think I understand it's something, that it's something that exists now and it's used in a certain way now, but that we want it to be part of this plan going forward. So if you could just give me a sense of what the transitional ESOL high school program is now, what it's intended to do?
Handle that also as a next step. I'm really trying to be mindful of us moving forward, if that's all right.
Could they just take thirty seconds to tell me what, basically what it is?
But I do think it would be worth a follow-up also, so that everybody knows. It sounds like there's an area of confusion.
Okay, thanks.
The transitionally ESOL high school program is, is for students older than eighteen and older. That is for WEDA levels one and two specifically. And so they take the same kind of typical courses that a beginning high school student would take. So they take, they take the ESOL courses to develop language, they take math, they take the concept science and concept and world concepts.
And I would say too, I mean, we'd be welcome to take you on a tour of any of the sites.
South, South Lakes has a wonderful site. Yeah, South Lakes has one.
All right.
Okay, are you finished? Signs, anything else? Okay. Mr. Moon, Mr. Stork.
Oh, thank you. Challenges bring opportunities. And as we, you know, deal with the challenges we have, I'm glad that we are providing different opportunities for this, you know, group of students whom we need to support to become successful. You know, having said that, I have a couple of questions and then probably a comment, well, too. First of all, just a little commentary first, that I don't know what my English level might have been had I taken WEDA test forty years ago. There wasn't any WEDA test. So I could possibly level one or level two. By the time I graduated, I was almost twenty years old. So I do not know whether, under this model, I would have been placed in adult high school, transitional as opposed to the regular school. So when you have, when you say the recommendations programming for English learners between eighteen and twenty, to Lee and Stuart High School, whether these are mandated? I want to impose this on them, or this will be given as a strong encouragement? Or this would be just one of the options for them to consider?
Well, because these programs are in our high schools, it provides us lots of flexibility. Let me give an example that might get to a little bit of what I think Mr. Moon is saying. Let's say we had a student that enters in the ninth grade and they do meet our criteria in that, you know, for newcomer, and they're a level one or level two student, right? So we put them in the, in these classes or this structure as was designed, but we find that they're outstanding math student. Do we leave them in these courses or do we say, you know what, we can move that student out and put them in, you know, algebra, regular Algebra II? Because we're situated in a school, we can make those adjustments and accommodations for individual students. Would you all agree with that?
Yeah, so we can certainly have combined, you know, programming for students. We want to make sure that our programming fits each individual student. And, and just as a point of clarity in that, we want to, when students enter FCPS for this, for the purposes of our flow chart, they're already eighteen, nineteen. We're not considering students that enter at fifteen, when they hit their eighteenth birthday, that they go to transitional. This is specifically for students that are entering at that age level.
And I think to your point, I mean, that, that's the role of that counselor at the central registration site, to talk to the student and talk about where you are now in your English language, where you are now in your credits, what your goals are, and to find the right program for each student as an individual.
Thank you. You know, very much heartened by a super intensive response that if a particular student exhibits, you know, certain, you know, level of performance, you know, other, you know, other content subjects, maybe we could even, even under this program, we could consider them to place in the regular classes. Because I, you know, you know, remembering back to my first year in the US, happened to be in the city of Alexandria, when they started the ESL program back then, there were more latitude to place a student in regular classes. And even in the same, the world history class, I was not given a easier-to-read textbooks. And had I just stayed with the regular textbook, I do not know whether I had to pass that class, particular class. But with that, this, I understand about the first-year course offerings. As the students move up, my major, I hate to put it as a concern, but if, what I do not want to see is all these students throughout their four years of life in high school, or three years, or even longer, all being segregated, all by themselves. I see that in, was it slide number nineteen? You mentioned about opportunity to interact with the English-speaking peers, mentoring by, mentoring by peer English learners and native speakers. Mr. Paul, you and I had this conversation, you know, several months ago, you know, how important I see this for, you know, English language learners to be able to really interact with the native speakers, have their opportunities.
So that's critically important. We know that from the research and, and those opportunities will be built into the program in the ninth grade. In addition, I would say the way In addition, I would say the way we've discussed the program design and, you know, when we can share and when we have more time to share more detail with you, the four-year plan, it's really the first year and the second year where we really think about grouping the students and the teachers together to provide that extra support. And as the student's proficiency level increases, then there's a gradual release of responsibility and support. So students would be taking some classes perhaps, maybe still a language arts block in the cohort, and, you know, maybe a math and a science and a social studies class outside of the cohort. So as Dr. Garza said, it really depends on the individual student and where, how their language progresses and where their needs are going to be met the best. But we see that releasing, those supports being released over the four-year period of time in the high school program.
And with that assurance, you have my blessings.
Okay, Mr. Stork, followed by Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Darnett Kofex.
I just want to make sure I understand what we're, we're talking about 18 to 22-year-olds with less than six credits. That's the core population for this pilot, if you will.
For, that's part of it. So that's the, the primary program is a high school program for students on age, so students ages 14 through 13, 13 through 17.
The same criteria, the six credits within determine whether or not they are oriented towards this program or not.
Only if your age is 18 and older does that flow chart, that flow chart pertains to only students 18 and older.
Okay.
Yeah.
What kind, what numbers of students are you believe are likely to be part of this program in the first year?
For students, the 18 to 22, or for both?
I've not seen any numbers in this conversation. I don't maybe.
Well, we have the total population in the slide of about 419 students that would qualify to be in that age range of 18 to 22 that are currently in the base schools. And then it, the two pilot sites, Lee and Stewart, we've got the numbers, which are they 50?
So at Stewart, approximately 75 to 100 students, you know, given we don't know exactly who's coming this summer, but, and for Lee, it would be about the same.
And so the reason for selecting Lee and Stewart, a particular?
Those are the regions where we have the greatest number of students that reside, and there's some proximity there where we think that we can do some efficiencies with staffing and transportation. So that's the primary reason, because again, we have, you know, the Herndon area is another area of the greatest need. So it's really, you know, trying to figure out how we can, and Dr. Zuluaga discussed this, how we can start to build the program at a small level and a small scale while simultaneously, seeing if there's some additional things that we might be able to do for some of the other schools this year. But I'll tell you, there's been a lot of work, and our principals are in the back, and our executive principals are in the back, and we've had full day planning sessions with them on a number of occasions to think about how to adjust their staffing and their facilities for this program. So it is a lot of work to get this set up, but the primary reason why we selected those two sites was geographic proximity and the highest impact of need in terms of student, current student enrollment and projected student enrollment.
And the schools like Bryant, were they part of the initial conversation? Did you look at that, given their, likely their flexible status and lots of different programs?
Definitely their needs all across our system. What we were responding to, at least initially when the school year started, is we heard from principals, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
You know, I have this comprehensive high school, you know, of 2,200 students potentially, 2,400 students. Now I have this huge number of students whose needs are unique and so unique and so different, it's really difficult for me to adjust for their needs without some different designs and different support. So that's, I'm glad you asked that question, Mr. Stork. So why would we have picked high schools? You know, that's where we were, it seemed we were hurting the most in terms of principals saying, I need help, I, I'm not equipped, and we're not designed to meet the needs of the students that we currently have. Some of our smaller schools like Bryant, some of the others, they are a little bit more nimble in their ability to respond to individual student need. So largely it was, in these comprehensive high schools, we need to have a separate design and support structure for them.
And I support the ability to integrate other coursework into the students as they develop, give them more flexibility. I just, I guess that's, and I obviously understand the, particularly the issues at Lee, I've had lots of conversations with folks about that, but I just, I'm trying to understand the overall approach. And I'm sure very supportive of getting this started. I have no, and, but that's part of my, I guess, questions going forward is how does this really, will this really work as a subgroup, if you, you know, sub-school, if you will, within the schools?
And kind of part of the initial conversation was not scientific in the least. One of my first school visits this year, first day of school, I was with Deidra at Lee High School, and you heard me tell the story.
Yes, I have.
I walked into a world history, world history class, and there were 20, about 23 kids in the class, 23 students in the class. Not a single student spoke English, and the teacher did not speak Spanish. And so you walk away thinking, is this really the best that we can do for these students? There's got to be a different model. And so that was not scientific in any way, shape, or form. That was just kind of, wow, we've got to do something.
And I appreciate the intensity of focus that this has had really all year to try to put something together, and appreciate my colleagues going to Houston and looking at other schools, and your, your really leadership to move this forward, because it's clearly a need that, if we don't do this, this is one of those things you can't wait another year because these students are behind every moment we wait, so, thank you.
And if we said we had to wait another year, I don't know what these principals back here in the room would say. What would you all say if we said we're going to wait another year?
You finished, Mr. Stork? Okay, next I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Darnett Kofex.
So as meeting managers, Patty and I had the chance to kind of have a little bit more one-on-one conversation with Sloan, and so I'll try to move it maybe to the next level of questions. But first to say, I'm very appreciative, Dr. Garza, to you and your team for recognizing we have to start somewhere. And so being able to have this presented to us tells me that we have a very responsive school system. And so I want to start with that first and foremost. But I think what I really have is maybe one question and then some three suggested next step questions, because we can't obviously cover them today. So my one question is that we identified the current ninth graders that we have, correct? The new, you know, I'm looking at which slide number, where it said, you know, newcomer grade nine students that were as of September 2nd, 2014. So those students are now, in the fall, they'll be our 10th graders. You know what I'm saying? So if this program that's being piloted is going to be for our rising ninth graders, what's happening to our current ninth graders? They're just going to be taught in the old model?
Well, they're going to, they're going to be taught in the, they're going to be taught in the old model and in some of the new model. So we're looking at, for example, English 9 credit, expanding that English 9 for students that are currently in ninth grade to have them be able to take, because they weren't in English 9 this year, they were in an ESOL class, so they can take English 9 with support and receive credit for that. Math, it'll be based on their math level, as we discussed just now with Mr. Moon, based on how students are doing with math, we can place them in Algebra, we can give them support for that. The full, it will depend on, for the full array of, I guess, our programming, all those credits. They may not at this point, they may be out of that pilot.
That's okay. I mean, look, the bottom line is, you want to take a baseline group, and so it makes sense that trying to judge a pilot, then you want to see, okay, this is what happens when they arrive in and start, their starting point in ninth grade in this program, then where do we see the progress?
And to one other extent, pulling these students and putting them in a little bit more intensive program does provide some relief with the traditional ESOL structure.
Just a quick, just to clarify, however, based on what we have learned from a year of research, evaluation, visits, talking among principals and the experts, we are also thinking that it is important to provide a different type of professional development for our teachers at the high school level that will make the content more visible for the students. So that's something that we're exploring at both Lee and Stewart, based on the knowledge that we have gained with this, this structure.
Thank you. And so I'd just like to share with my colleagues some possible next step questions that I would like for us to see if we could get information about. One is the number of middle school and elementary newcomers, you know, to get those numbers. Because we've got the high school numbers, again, on that slide, where it said total is 686.
Yeah.
But then, you know, what are we looking at numbers-wise at the middle school or the elementary school? If that could be given, I think that would help the board to, again, get a sense of the population in each of those grade levels. And then the second thing is getting those numbers and then maybe getting a sense from Dr. Garza and her team on, you know, do we have hopes that if this pilot goes well and we try to then bring it to scale for other schools, how might we then be looking at the, a newcomer model for middle school, newcomer model for elementary school? Just some kind of information in that regard. The second thing was, and I really appreciate Dr. Zuluaga bringing this up, and it is about the ESOL training. I mean, this is sort of special skills to know how to do beginner language curriculum delivery. So is, that was my other question I wanted to find out is, how is FCPS going to do sort of special training? Will it be done over the summer to help our teachers be successful with that?
Right. It all depends on the needs, where we see the needs, based on the needs of the teachers and the needs of the students. Like a clear example, for Stewart High School, the social studies teachers are, we have shared these ideas with our teachers as well, principals and teachers, and they are asking for that kind of training. The training that comes out of the ESOL office is very strong, but for example, we are learning the power of the PSYOP model, the Shelter Instruction Observation Protocol, on how do you develop the listening, the speaking, the reading and writing skills, and at the same time, how do you teach content? So that's, those are things, Rich, you may want to talk a little bit more about it, but those are things that we are considering based on the needs of our teachers and based on the needs of our high schools.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so don't feel like you have to answer it, but even if it were a next step that you wanted to speak to.
I think we can, we can give you more information, but just briefly, I would say, there's different levels of professional development support that we need to provide, and I don't mean elementary versus secondary. I mean, in the pilot schools, we need to be doing a different type of professional development, more job-embedded coaching type of professional development with these teachers. But then for the other teachers that aren't teaching in this model, we're trying to figure out how we can support their needs as well. So if you happen to be a teacher in Lee and Stewart, our hope would be that you would participate in some site-based professional development. We do have five days scheduled in the summer to do some of that work. So those folks can be operating at a pretty high level. For all of our teachers in the division, that's part of the professional development plan that we're crafting for the division, and that's one of the strands, is to make sure that all of our teachers, whether or not you're an ESOL teacher, have the kind of training and support to understand how to meet the needs of ESOL students in your classroom. That's one of our priorities in our PD plan, is to make sure that our core instruction, what happens on a daily basis in every classroom, is of the nature that will support ESOL learners. That's one of the components of the plan. So we're going to be providing different professional development opportunities, things that teachers can access, from optional professional development on staff development days to academy courses that where teams can participate at a, you know, a deeper level. So there's different levels of professional development related to this need.
Yeah. I would say, Dr. Garza, where I was thinking is, you're going to roll out a pilot in September, and I think it would be great for our board, as we're getting, you know, inquiries from the community, to be able to answer, here's the type of preparatory training that we're going to give our teachers so that this can, you know, be successful. Without the information, we have to just kind of go, oh, we just trust it's going to get done, or we just, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's just a way to strengthen.
Well, I wouldn't expect you to have the answer to that question anyway, Ms. McLaughlin. You can send it to me, and we'll answer it for you.
Okay.
But, but your point's a good one, and I think there are some specific strategies for these particular schools, but the big picture is long-term improvement across the board.
And then I'll just send the last question, which is, to Ms. Strauss, you asked it. We know that that wraparound services is so critical, that's evidence-based, so what information we could get in terms of, especially Ms. Hines, Ms. Strauss, and I, working on the skip team, it'd be nice for us to be able to go back to that collaborative group and say, look, we're starting this pilot, and we really are looking at having something, you know, specific that lays out how that collaboration will look of social services to support the program. Again, I think it's just lends strength and credibility to what you're trying to do. So thank you.
Okay. Chairman Kofex.
Thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues for your thoughtful comments and questions. Thank you, staff. I'm, if you'll indulge me just a moment to give a brief history, and I'm doing this because we got a letter this morning from the MSOAC Committee, and they basically, in a nutshell, said something to the effect that some of this is a little, it's too little, too late. And I do want to talk a little bit about that for the public, about how this evolved, and at least from my perspective, not necessarily from a school perspective, but I'll give it to you very quickly from my perspective, Ms. Reed. When I first got elected to this board, I heard from my predecessors, from many of my principals, no matter how much, insert mascot name here, Hawk Time, Eagle Time, I can't get to a certain group of my kids. I don't think I understood that when I came on the board. Why were our ESOL intervention programs not working? What was happening? Then I learned more about the levels that we are seeing and the growing numbers that we are seeing. And I think when you, again, this is for the general public, we're talking children with extensive interrupted learning. We like to use, again, use my edge of speak comment that I made earlier today. We're talking basically children who have limited literacy in their own language, do not have number recognition, have zero English skills. This is a completely different level than we were seeing, and we're seeing these children in greater numbers. We, as Dr. Garza spoke, that's what we saw on the first day of school at Lee High School. So how can we make these children successful? How can we make them part of our team? I mean, part of our, part of our successful, and what kind of teams of professionals do we need to bring in? I saw something at NSBA, I think Ms. McLaughlin saw it too. All of you were working and realizing that we needed something else. We took that team out there, and then we brought it to a forum. At the forum, we all agreed as a board that this is something that we need to do, and this is something that we need to go forward. You looked at best practices, not just in Texas, but across the country. You looked at, you looked at, you developed a crosswalk. What do we have that's learning, that's working? What do we have that's not working? And what do we have that we need to improve? You said you would give us something in the spring. You're spot on when you said you would, and here we are. It's not everything that we want it to be, but it is quite comprehensive. I think I would ask staff to look at some of the questions that they have, but I do want to answer some of those. I think one of the things that was asked is, you know, why only high schools? Because we only have four years to graduate. And it's important that we get this information, that we change the practices that we have, and people understand this. MSOAC, I was there the day you all briefed all of them on it, and I assume that after I was there, you continued to converse about that. I don't know whether that's true or not. I, I think what we have before us is a great start. I think it is crucial that it start, and I think it is not too little, too late. I think it is spot on for what we need, seeing the rapidly changing things that we've seen in our system over the last two to three years. So I, I want to encourage a couple of things. I did visit the Transitional ESOL High School with Steve Craig and Mr. Polio one evening, and it is tremendous. I participated in activities that they were doing. I encouraged my colleagues to do the same. I think that's very, very important. I agree with Mr. Moon. It's, and that is, that is never, the intent is always to get these children and young adults up to speed as quickly and most efficiently as possible, and have them be graduates of our school system. It is never not, we continually want to integrate them into our school system. And I did talk a little bit, because I do hear this from my high school principals as well, the other part, and I'm not sure if this is in there, I have a question on this, the acculturation piece, like what does it mean to be in a U.S. high school if I've never been to this country? if I've never been to this country? And, and I think that's important for them to understand as well. So I hope that piece is in there. Okay, in the one class, it's, which, do you know which one?
It's in the Strategies for Success.
Strategies for Success, okay. So I think that's very important. Several of my colleagues talked about the wraparound services, Ms. Schultz talked about visiting with Pat Harrison, and that's crucial. That partnership is crucial, because we continually, that's something our Board of Supervisors needs to understand what we're already doing, and we need to utilize their help and their assistance to do that. And, let me see, finally, I, that, that might be it right now, but I, but I can't thank you enough for getting this done this year. I, I do, I'm trying to quickly look, while I have the microphone, to see this, the MSOAC, if there's anything else I can answer right now. Perhaps not, but I, I thank you, and I, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kofex, I have just one quick comment and question regarding, first of all, this has been a wonderful discussion, and it's been substantive, and it's been very helpful, and thank you for answering all of our questions. I apologize if some people wanted to ask more questions, but I think we did a pretty good job here. The group that's eighteen to twenty-two years old, just reinforce for everybody, is this a group that we are required to educate? Is it anybody who walks through our doors? Is it up to a certain age? Just to clarify that.
Yes, we are, we are required to educate these students up until age twenty-two.
Okay. And that population in particular, you alluded to the fact that some Title III funds might be allowed to be used, right, for them? So I guess the question is, do we, do we get funding for kids eighteen to twenty-two?
Yes. Yes, we definitely do.
Yes, good. Okay. Well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to reiterate those points. And now, can we go to next steps? Does anybody, Dr. Garza or staff have any concluding comments? Ms. Strauss has a quick go-back while we're getting ready to do our next steps.
Just very, very, very quick in past history, we have actually geared up to serve this population, this kind of population, twice before in the past over the last thirty years. And so whether or not we need this forever, who knows? But we are a destination for populations on the move in times of need. And we did it after Vietnam, we did it after El Salvador, Nicaragua, we're seeing it again. Who knows if it continues? So, but this is the best planning, I think, that we have done. So you, you deserve, we deserve to thank you a lot. I think we will grow to meet these needs, who long, who knows how long we will need to do it, but we have done it before, but this is a really good plan.
Okay, next steps. Okay, the first one here. Staff to provide information on all high schools related to the following slides. Newcomer grade nine students, English learners, eighteen to twenty-two, level one and two at base schools, and students with interrupted formal education.
I think basically it was wherever we were specific about Stewart High School and Lee High School, also having that same information for the other comprehensive high schools.
Right. And then there was Ms. Schultz's point, which was different, which was to include the, the total, like, for example, three hundred and seventy-three.
Context.
Yeah, the context dropouts, how many are total, how many are total for the whole student population? The Venn diagrams adding the numbers there, but we don't need to capture all this.
I would just add to the end, and, and the overall total numbers for context, right there.
And then the other thing I heard was just a description about the adult high schools, the Transitional ESOL High Schools. I mean, that one slide where you had your bars on the right, which were wonderful, I think it would just help all of us to kind of review what those are, where they are, and how many students are in each of those, because that's an excellent chart that kind of shows the whole system, and that their, people are going in various places, but...
Right. In that second bullet, it's, it's not adult, just adult, it's the adult, it's the Transitional High School.
Yeah, and the adult, yeah, it's all, yeah, basically.
Transitional is critical.
You got it. You understand what we're saying, right? Didn't, anything else? I think that basically captures it. Thank you all very much. Well, this is, this concludes part one of a two-part session on instruction.
Thank you all so much. And by the way, I want to point out, Rich Polio has done all this work, among many things, in his first year in the job.
Wow!
So, so we hired him, and we said, oh, by the way, we're going to want you to design this new program.
Yeah, we tricked him pretty good, but his attitude has been great every day. And I do want to say, I failed to mention, I see Debbie Tyler sitting in the back, and she's been so instrumental in this work in Region Three as well. So thank you to Debbie.
All right, a sense of the board, five-minute break? Or keep going?
We have to break anyway.
Yeah, we got to break anyway. Okay, just a five-minute health break.